I'm calling this meeting of the Town Council to order. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge?
Our pledge is that we seek the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Captain Fred Portillo, who will be here with us tonight. I understand you may be coming more often now. Would you like to say a few words?
Put him on his cover.
Captain Portillo is one student of mine in forensic science.
It was, yeah, I graduated in 2006 from the Police Academy from Western. Been here for 10 years and was promoted back in July, so I'm fairly new at this position, but I'm enjoying it and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
The first item on the agenda requiring action is public input, and there's none, so we'll move on to the next item, which is council comments. Counselor Beddison?
Hey, Mayor. At our last council meeting, we had to approve our quarterly budget report to DFA, and concern was expressed about the format of the report. I had told everyone it's in the minutes that I would bring it up at the New Mexico Municipal League, New Mexico Association of Counties Joint Executive Committee meeting this past week. And so what I first did is I discussed it with the New Mexico Municipal League staff. And between the staff at the league, Alex, town staff, and me, it was determined that there was some information lost in translation between DFA memos, a presentation they did, things like that. But I just want everyone to know, the upshot is, is that the Town of Silver City is completing all monthly and quarterly reports accurately and in a timely fashion. So it's all been resolved. And I appreciate Alex for explaining that to the league, because there's, really, I think that there were some presentations that could have been a little bit better, a little bit clearer from the DFA. So, but everything's done and we're ready and we're going. So at last week's New Mexico Municipal League, New Mexico Association of Counties Joint Executive Meeting, that's where the two local government entities come together to discuss their priorities and to work together at the upcoming legislative session. There was an agreement, well, I don't think it's necessarily an agreement, it's just that it was acknowledged by the executive committee members and their respective executive directors that municipalities and counties will be facing one of the most difficult legislative sessions in the history of the two associations being formed. The first concern is the rumblings that began during the special session that local government autonomy and authority is threatened, that the legislators will pass legislation to restrict or prevent local governments from bonding with their taxes, whether it is on the Town of Silver City State Shared GRT, which is 1.225%, or other municipal taxes that come to 1.8125%. I want to be clear that while the GRT tax rate in town is 8%, the state collects those taxes and then returns only 3.0375% minus at least 3% for collecting and managing the town's money. We use portions of these taxes, as you've heard over the years, to bond so that we can pay for quality of life issues, purchase capital equipment, pay for capital and infrastructure improvements, to improve our services and infrastructure for you, our residents, with very little tax. But I ensure of the 8% gross receipts tax that we pay within the town limits, the 5.125% is for the state of New Mexico. And I just want to make sure that I knew that we only receive this around 3% minus all the fees that they manage to impose us with for collecting our taxes and then giving it back to us. The second concern is the acceleration of the timeline for the decrease of the whole harmless distribution to municipalities over 10,000 in population like Silver City and counties over 48,000. The whole harmless distribution was changed during the 2013 session with the Omnibus Tax Bill. Towns under 10,000 in population and counties under 48,000 in population, like our own Grant County, got to keep their whole harmless distribution intact. Municipalities like Silver City that we've often talked about, that are over 10,000 in population and counties over 48,000 in population, would see a 6% annual distribution decrease that began in July 2015 over 15 years. So for this fiscal year, starting with 2015 and then starting with July 1, 2016, we're down 12% in our distributions. Accelerating the timeline for the decrease could mean that come July 1, 2017, all distributions for towns over 10,000, like Silver City, or counties over 48,000, could cease. A loss of $1.7 million, or 22% of our general budget in one fell swoop. Or they could shorten the period from 15 years to five years to four years to whatever they decide. The third concern between the two associations was that we be united, be a united front to ensure that municipalities and counties both have a place at the table during tax reform discussions to ensure that local government revenues are reserved and to prevent some local governments from major windfalls while others lose out, as is currently the case with the 3/8 hold harmless GRT. So I just wanted to give a synopsis of the way we're working together, because local governments have to stick together in order for things to work. And the last thing, I'm announcing my intent to run for reelection to the council of District 1 seat today. I'm well aware of the challenges facing our municipalities and in particular the Town of Silver City. I want to continue advocating for the Town of Silver City as a member of the New Mexico Municipal League Executive Board, as treasurer, and for the residents of District 1 and the town to ensure that we can continue to provide to our residents as well as grow the essential and quality of life services they have come to expect. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Counselor Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have to say today is I just would like to congratulate all of the winners in our local races this past election. I'm hopeful that with the new five-person commission that we can work together on some projects and do a lot of good stuff for the county and the municipality. Thank you.
Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we're going to have a veterans' day program at the bridge on Hudson on Friday, and we're going to get all our veterans groups together, and the Marine Corps, and the American Legion, and the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 358. We will be holding some sort of ceremony, and we're going to get a couple of plaques, correct, Mr. Brown, to be put on the site of the bridge for people who are walking in both directions can look at it. And also, it's going to be signage at the north end, the south end, correct? And this will happen Friday at 1:30. There was a, I had a couple of calls, well, I had one call about a smart meter, so I will discuss this with Mr. Brown tomorrow. I am not going to run for your election. I am sorry, but I, I put a lot of thought into it. And my wife is getting ready to retire, so I like it, I really do, but I think it's time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all the other councilors for all the work they do. I want to put a plug in for citizen science. So as local citizen, Kelly Hart is working with Dispatch and has taken some wonderful direction and helpful direction from our Chief of Police to track sirens, because he's concerned about the amount of sirens that are going on in that town. And one of the things that he presented to a group last week was that we can expect about eight sirens a day, if you take it average, because there are emergency responders who are required to run sirens in certain conditions, and those are going to be averaging about eight a day. So on some days, we might only get two, and some days, we might get 20. The maximum number of sirens, according to his calculation, that we might actually get in a day with a variety of emergencies would be 54. Let's hope that we don't have 54 emergencies in any one day. But I want to put a plug in for that, because he was interested. He saw an issue, he wanted to be involved in gathering evidence, he sought out the right people, he's been working with the data, and he's learned a lot, and he's going to be sharing his results. There's lots of opportunity for citizen science. Now, citizen science has been around for a long time. People do bird counts and butterfly counts and track the stars, they do astronomy, but I think that there's a real opportunity for citizen science in terms of local governance. And one of the things that I have been looking at is there's been a couple of doctoral dissertations, one that was particularly interesting in Boston, in which a doctoral student used a citizen scientist to track neighborhood noise. And they identified what caused noise in neighborhoods and frequencies, and then did visual mapping, and then worked in the neighborhoods to figure out ways to address it. So I just want to put a plug in, if anyone is interested in citizen science, come talk to me.
Does the council have any additional comments? By the way, of information, next week, for the most of next week, I'll be attending a MOLI training in Santa Fe. I'm looking forward to that. And speaking of science, at the first meeting in December, Mr. Marshall will be presenting, we're still on track for that, we're presenting three options of Welcome to Silver City Science. And so we're looking forward to that. Okay, next item is changes to the agenda. The council want to make any changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes of the October 25, 2016 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Adams Smith?
Intervision, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City of October 25, 2016.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Beddison?
I second the motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed may say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown, do you have anything? Next item on the agenda under new business is item 11A, the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-29, a resolution supporting the Town of Silver City's participation in the Capitol Outlay Program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation for sidewalk improvements in Silver City, Grand County. Mr. Brown?
This is the resolution to accept the Capitol Outlay Award of $125,000, I believe, yes, $125,000 for sidewalk improvements. The plan for this, these funds is to upgrade some of the sidewalks and put additional sidewalks on the north side of 32nd Street between PA and Silver Street. So we're looking at trying to create a safer route to the school from PA for the kids to walk or residents, because there's a lot of people that walk in that area. A lot of times, they have to walk on 32nd Street. So that's, that's the plan with these funds.
Okay. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Brown? Okay. Do I hear a motion then? Counselor Beddison?
I move to approve a res- a Resolution Number 2016-29, a resolution supporting the Town of Silver City's participation in a Capitol Outlay Program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation for sidewalk improvements in Silver City, Grand County.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Connor?
I second that motion as stated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Just a second.
Yes.
Mr. Brown, so I just wanted to remind everyone that this is from the Capitol Outlay from the, from the session that was done in 2016 earlier this year.
Yes, sir.
And so there's no matching funds, this is directly from the legislature.
Yes, there's no matching requirements, but the town is going to be doing, we're already doing some engineering that is going to be required, so we can use the entire amount of the funds for construction.
And with the sidewalks, there's going to be ramp access for road terrorists and pedestrians.
It's all eight, it all has to be eight in a plane.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Adams?
I'm.
Counselor Adams Smith?
I'm.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is new business 11B, is the approval/disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-30, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a Colonial Infrastructure Project Fund loan grant slash, loan slash grant agreement in the amount of $903,397 for Phase 2 of the College Avenue improvements. Mr. Brown, this is yours too.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, this is the, the grant loan that was approved by the Colonial Infrastructure Program for this fiscal year. And basically, the project is from West Street through, what's the last street, F or E?
E.
Yeah, from West Street through East Street. She will repave the street, replace curb and gutter along the length of the street, and then replace sidewalk where it's necessary. So we're going to be doing that along the entire length of the street. We are also working with the university to include lighting and some, I keep using the word, some.
Landscaping?
Landscaping, there you go. That the university wants included in the project. They're willing to put some funding in to do the additional lighting and landscaping. So it looks to be a really good cooperative project between us and the university. It may even close to double the size of the project, this grant, with all that other, the other additions. So we're looking forward to it. This is a 10% match, which was included in this year's budget, and there's a $90,000 loan that can go through 20 years, but we can pay it off at any time, so, you know, we can just schedule this. For instance, the 2013 Colonial Grant, we're paying the match, I mean, the loan for that off completely this year. And so we're, we'll be able to schedule when we're able to pay off the loan.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Counselor Adams Smith?
Mr. Brown, I've been down near that area, near West and College, right around College, visiting some businesses, when it rains and it gets really flooded there. Is this project going to address any of that flooding that goes on?
That's the intent of it. It's a drainage and pavement plan, that's the intent of the curb and gutter. And we're also going to increase the capacity of the sewer line in there, water and sewer for future expansion at the university. And, you know, so we're also going to be working on coverts and things like that.
Thank you. I just wanted to have that, the public that this is going to be working on that flooding. Thank you.
Counselor Beddison?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brown, could you tell where the funds are going to come from for our matching?
The general fund, there are some funds that are going to come from the water sewer fund for the, the water and sewer upgrades that are going to be going on in the project.
Okay, since it states that from the 61/4 of 1%.
Yeah, that's the dedicated for the loan portion.
I just want to make sure that we say that that's the dedicated portion. So it's coming from the municipal gross receipts tax?
Yes, that's the dedicated for the loan. We don't have to pay it from that, but that is what's dedicated if they need to come after it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for working with the university. It's good to see all of these cooperative efforts. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown, for that effort. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ray?
It has to be read from me.
Yeah, the long one, right?
The long one. Do you need to sit?
Yes, I was just going to confirm that this gigantic paragraph leading into the resolution must be read. You sure you want to do that?
Go for it.
Go for it, Counselor Ray.
Go for it. The municipal. No, not that, because it has to be.
It's the long one.
It's the long one, this one?
Yeah. I move to approve a Resolution 2016-30, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a Colonial Infrastructure Project Fund Loan Grant Agreement by and among the New Mexico Colonial Infrastructure Board, CIB, and the New Mexico Finance Authority, Finance Authority, and collectively with the CIB, the lenders, granters, and the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, the borrower, grantee, in the total amount of $903,000, Evidence and obligation of a borrower grantee to utilize the loan grant amount solely for the purpose of financing the cost of street and drainage improvement on College Avenue, Phase 2, from Cooper Street, West to East Street, and solely in the manner described in the loan grant agreement, providing for the pledge and payment at a loan amount of $90,340, solely from, solely from the 61/4 of 1% increment, a municipal grant gross receipt tax distributed through the borrower grantee by the state taxation and revenue department, and accepting of a grant amount of $813,057, certifying that the loan grant amount, together with other funds available to the borrower grantee, is sufficient to complete the project. Approving the form of and other details concerning the loan grant agreements and intercept agreement, ratifying actions heretofore taken, repealing all actions inconsistent with this resolution, and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the loan grant agreement and the intercept agreement.
Is there a second? Counselor Connor?
I second that motion as stated.
We have a motion, any second, any discussion?
Not too much, sir.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, it's read by Counselor Ray in a second. Ann, roll call, please.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Adams?
Aye.
Counselor Bess?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item is 11C, the approval/disapproval of Notice of Intent Ordinance Number 1253 in ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Business Registration, Title and Sections 10-20 through 10-22, Article 3, Business License, Sections 10-34 through 10-64 of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. This ordinance is sponsored by Counselor Ammon Smith. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this notice of intent is a way to clarify language and remove redundancies across documents ordinances having to do with the town, authorizing any entity to conduct business in the town. So the hope is to actually simplify the process. So I'm going to have to let you know that this review of this and the changes of this was prompted by a project to look at example of what is called the sharing economy going on right here in Silver City. That example, the sharing economy, is peer-to-peer short-term lodging, which has grown enormously in the past two years here in Silver City. So, a little background, internet-based platforms to market peer-to-peer short-term lodging, like Airbnb and VRBO and HomeAway, really came into existence about eight years ago. But those have initiated a real sea change in the tourism lodging industry by opening a way for people to come and stay in other people's properties. Trousers who use such services are choosing to break away, we find, and research is showing, from the standard hotel room renting. So there's a big use of these peer-to-peer short-term lodging facilities. So instead of making a reservation at a hotel, they rent an entire house for a few days or a week, or a suite inside a home, maybe a casita, maybe an apartment, or sometimes just a room or two or three inside of a house. You know, I saw that this is growing enormously, and I'll give you an example. When I first got interested in this question, this issue, I looked at the Airbnb listings for Silver City, and there were about a dozen. Now there are over 60, that's right, six zero, over 60, and there are about 40 on vacation rental by owner. So there's a lot out there within our town limits of people marketing that they have short-term rentals. Now, I have to tell you that tourists like these, and property owners, of course, like the idea to make a little extra money. At the best, peer-to-peer lodging sites open to a new kind of tourism experience. And if you see the Airbnb ads, what they say is that if you use their service, you can live like a local. And indeed, if you read the reviews on these service sites, people almost uniformly have very high praise for Silver City. They're not talking much about the houses in which they're staying, or the apartments that they're renting. They're praising our town, the amenities, the beauty, the friendly people, the recreation, the historic downtown, the great restaurants. So people who are staying at these really are coming to stay in Silver City and live like a local. So I got interested in this, and I've been working with the town staff on ways to really bring these people who are running these peer-to-peer short-term lodging into the business fold, because they may not recognize it, but they are actually running small businesses. The data that we've collected shows that there's a fairly robust occupancy rate in these businesses. But most of them, we have verified, are not in the fold of small business in terms of being registered, having a business license, or paying taxes. And what we want to do is we want to encourage them to come in the fold. And in fact, I'm going to state here, the town wants to encourage small businesses of all types. And so this notice of intent is a first step into trying to make it easier for people to actually get a business license to find out what all the things they need to do to run a business in town. And I was a small business owner for many years, and I'm really committed to making that easier. Now, it's not the only thing, there's going to be other things happening. There's going to be, have to be changes in plan in the zoning ordinance to allow these peer-to-peer short-term lodgings. There's going to have to be other kinds of changes that will come in front of this body or other bodies. And there's already a great deal of work being done behind the scenes with the town staff who issue these kinds of, you know, do the processes. So I know that this ordinance, this notice of intent, and if it follows, that it will be something that the staff support since. be something that the staff support since they've been working hard on already. So I'm hoping that this Notice of Intent passes as a way, as a first step, to make it easier in Silver City to run a small business, to legally register and abide by safety quotes and to make sure that the business is contributing back to the amenities and the services of the town. So I do hope that my fellow councillors approve this in OI as a formal first step. As a first step, of course, it means that it'll be open for some time for public comment, and I hope that we'll have public comment. I know there's a few things in here I want to change already, but we want to get started in Silver City to make it easier to have a small business.
Thank you. You may have mentioned it, and I've heard it, so as a small business, in this business, they will be collecting lodgers' taxes, and then those taxes will go to the city, correct?
Yes, right now, it appears that most, actually, we only found a record of one of these entities, and so there's a lot coming and asking to become a small business. So right now, they're not paying any grocery receipts tax or any lodger's tax. And as you guys know, lodger's tax is the way that the town markets itself. And so these entities are benefiting from the marketing but not contributing to that pool of funding, and I think that it would be only fair to have them to contribute for the services that the town provides.
So in effect, it would be like adding a fairly large number of new motels for one-night, one-night stays, right?
Very small, very small hotels, yes. But yes...
But in terms of lodger's tax?
But in terms of lodger's tax, Mr. Brown and I did it. We did a quick estimate of just a month, and it looked like, it was like maybe three months, over three months, $18,000 in lodger's tax. So that adds up, it's over $1,000. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Council? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Councilor Adams Smith?
Yes, sir, thank you. I move to adopt, I move to approve the Notice of Intent to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Business Registration, Title and Sections 10-20 through 10-22, Article 3, Business License, Section 1044 through 1064 of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City of New Mexico. And this would be Ordinance Number 1253.
Okay, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Bedison?
I second the motion, stated.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is 11D, to discuss and vote on whether to change or cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for November 22, 2016. This is a time when a lot of families and a lot of town employees and others travel to family and so on. So does the council have any questions for Mr. Brown or Ann in terms of the feasibility of this?
Yes.
There is nothing that I can advise during this period.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for November 22, 2016.
Okay, a second?
Mr. Adams, sir.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the new business is 11E, to discuss and vote on whether to change or cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for December 27, 2016, during the Christmas holidays for the same reason I just mentioned. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Brown or Ann in terms of...
Thank you. We will reach out and ask you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Adams Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to cancel the regular council meeting scheduled for December 27, 2016.
Is there a second?
Mr. Ray? I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Merry Christmas to you all. Motion carries. This concludes the business of the town council. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Bedison?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, there's a second?
I second that, I'll adjourn.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion, this meeting is adjourned.